Good afternoon. The Board of Education Committee is now called to order Thursday, January 18th, four o'clock PM. We will begin our committee with Instructional Services Chair Dr. Johnson. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Vice President. And good afternoon to all of you. I have seen you since last year. So I'm very happy to see everyone. Today on the Instructional Services Committee, we have two items. IS one, the presentation, and IS two, which is action. First, we will hear IS one magnet school presentation by Dr. Ben Bridges.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President, and Dr. Hillary. Board members, and Superintendent Dr. Sams. I am Ben Bridges, Director of Fine Arts and Magnet Programs for the District, and I will be presenting an overview of our magnet schools. The district's vision is to ensure that each student will demonstrate strength of character and will be college or career rated. Our mission is that the Big County School District develops a highly-trained staff and engaged community dedicated to educating each student for a 21st-century global society. Our values are competence, loyalty, open communication, defined autonomy, and honor. In terms of our victory in our school's strategic map, the district's magnet work is found embedded across the map, from recruiting teachers to support our magnet schools, to managing magnet processes and procedures, to partnering with students, parents, and community, all in order to increase content mastery. Our purpose is to provide an overview of magnet schools within the Big County School District. Our roadmap includes the magnet application process, individual magnet school overviews, and looking ahead. Our trick takeaway is that the magnet portfolio of schools involves diverse themes aimed at attracting and engaging students in specialized areas of learning. Our district identified magnet schools include Alexander II Magnet Science Magnet School, Hurdell Hunt Communications Magnet School, Dr. John H. Hurd Elementary School, an academic magnet, Bible Academy of the Arts, Miller Fine Arts Magnet Middle School, Central Fine Arts and International Baccalaureate Magnet High School. Previously, other schools were designated as magnet within the Big County School District, but in 2017 were phased out due to declining magnet enrollment. Parents' survey results also provide data in regards to student interest in magnet programs as conducted periodically. As a district, we hold membership with Magnet Schools of America and look to this organization as a resource. Our magnet schools work to fulfill goals around the five pillars of magnets, which include diversity, innovative curriculum and professional development, academic excellence, leadership, and family and community partnerships. Magnet students account for 9% of the Big County School District enrollment. This percentage only includes the number of students who apply and are accepted as magnet students, but we recognize that magnet school themes and course offerings are available school-wide to over 3,200 magnet and residentially zoned students within our magnet schools. The data indicates that 55% of our magnet students are female and 81% of our magnet students are African-American. As part of the application process, parents must submit an electronic application during the application window, which closed on December 6, 2022, or during the waiting list application period beginning March 3, 2023 this year. Prospective K-8 students and their parents complete an interest interview with schools according to lottery-assigned numbers. Prospective 6 through 12 students audition or complete an essay dependent on the program. Students are seeded based on the interest interview and academic performance, conduct, and attendance records. It is important to note that the interview is based on interest in the magnet theme for the school rather than specific knowledge of the subject matter. For instance, at Alexander II Magnet Science Magnet School, we interview regarding interest in math and science rather than asking specific math and science questions. The interest interviews are in place to help ensure students are interested in the embedded themes within the school. We begin with Alexander II Math and Science Magnet School. The Math and Science Magnet holds the distinction as being the first magnet school in Georgia, holds STEM certification, one of 74 schools through the Department of Education since 2020, featured math and science labs as STEM courses, currently serves 464 magnet students, and received 305 magnet applications for the 2023-2024 school year. We move on to Hurdell Hunt Communications Magnet School. The communications magnet features Spanish as a world language as a magnet course to grow young leaders. Became a leader-in-me school in 2015 with leader-in-me lighthouse status achieved in 2019. Currently serves 120 magnet students, received 90 magnet applications for the 2023-2024 school year. We move to Dr. John H. Hurd Elementary School, an academic magnet. The academic magnet, among the first 10 programs to be implemented at the elementary level across the state, Hurd features agriculture in the classroom as a course connecting specifically technology and engineering, features art and music, partners with Professional Arts Integration Resource, serves 38 magnet students currently, received 94 magnet applications for the 2023-2024 school year. Now we move to Bible Academy of the Arts. The elementary fine arts magnet features art, dance, general music, and orchestra as magnet courses. Received the school Bell Award for innovative programs since 2016 for robotics, orchestra, theater, dance, art, and technology. Serves 442 magnet students currently and received 300 magnet applications for the 2023-2024 school year. Next, we have Miller Fine Arts Magnet Middle School. The middle fine arts magnet features art, band, chorus, dance, orchestra, and theater as magnet courses. Partners with the Douglas Theater as a location for performances. Serves 296 magnet students currently and received 229 magnet applications for the 2023-2024 school year. Miller will begin STEAM certification in 2023, which will support the current middle school programming and make direct connections with themes present in our elementary magnet schools. This certification will also support the magnet programs at present at Central. As a leader-in-me lighthouse school, Miller will continue to support our communications component for young leaders at the elementary level. Now we have Central Fine Arts and International Baccalaureate Magnet High School. The high school fine arts and international baccalaureate magnet program features art, band, chorus, dance, orchestra, and theater as fine arts magnet courses. Features the IB diploma program and the IB career-related program. Serves 388 magnet students. Received 106 magnet applications for the 2023-2024 school year. And in looking ahead, Dr. John H. Hurd Elementary School, an academic magnet, projects a STEAM certification free visit from the Georgia Department of Education during the 2022-2023 school year. Miller Fine Arts Magnet Middle School plans to begin the STEAM certification process in 2023. Central Fine Arts and International Baccalaureate Magnet High School received 24 IB career-related program magnet applications for the 2023-2024 school year and is planning for implementation. All magnet schools are working on goals around Magnet Schools of America. Miller has included previously. Are there any questions?
All right, well, now, do you have any questions? If Hannah? Thank you for your presentation very much. I just have one question. There's one kind of piece that seems to be not addressed in terms of magnet programs, and that's STEM for high school or STEAM for high school. And I know, you know, like you said, you phased out the program at Westside as well as Southwest Law Academy. Is there any thought about bringing some form of magnet back for that?
So at this time, we do not have any plans for that. We really are focused on Miller becoming STEAM certified first. Of course, we've added the IB career pathway as well, but we certainly have looked at in the past and we can certainly bring that back to the table to look at certification, STEM, and STEAM certification in specific areas at the high school.
Madam Chair? Thank you. Thank you for your presentations. Just to follow up, thank you for the additional historical reference for the schools that were discontinued. And just to correct, Westside, Northeast, and Southwest High School?
That is correct.
So it will be no longer appropriate in a sense to consider Westside as Westside's pre-tenir back to the school.
That is correct.
Self-sirens and Southwest Law Academy.
That is correct.
And since 2017, hasn't been any attempts to maybe look to see if interest has been populated on the surface at those schools?
So we conducted a survey during the 2017-2018 school year, which was after those programs had been phased out in terms of looking at interest. Interest really was not there for those programs at that time, but we are going to have another interest survey coming up within one to three years, was our plan at that time, to look to see if interest is there for other magnet programs.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? I have two questions. All right, looking at Alexander being the Math and Science Magnet School, how wondering, is there a continuum for those students who matriculate in math and science, but they get to middle and high? What do we do for them then?
So that is the very reason why we are working on our STEAM certification effort for Miller, because that will have the science and math components that will really be embedded as part of the theme there, as well as the arts, of course, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. And so that is the plan there. Though we have high academic standards at Miller, we knew that we were missing that piece for parents to be able to look to see the trail from elementary to middle to high school for their student, as well at the high school level. We, of course, have the International Baccalaureate Program, both the diploma program and the career-related program. And so those do support, but we realized there was a gap at the middle school level that we really wanted to embed that STEAM certification effort.
Thank you. And at Hurdell Hunt, with communication? I think they only have 26% of students in the magnet program. It's 120 students. Is there any consideration being given to beat that problem up?
So I'll be honest with you. At Hurdell Hunt, in terms of the applicants that we receive and the students you come in to interview, we're really full in terms of Hurdell Hunt. They really have a great program and people are interested in that program, but we have a large zone population there as well. And so that is where, that is part of the reason why you see a little bit lower numbers at Hurdell.
So would these students go to the middle and high? Would that be a continuation for them?
Yes. So Hurdell Hunt really relates everything that they do, their communications component, back to the leader-in-me program that they have established as a lighthouse school. So Miller has just been established as a lighthouse school, and so that leadership piece will also be a continuum at Miller as well.
But when did you say the program started at Hurd?
The program started at Hurd, I believe, four years ago.
And that program will tie into the program at Rutherford?
Actually, we're hoping it will try to tie into the program, the STEAM program that will happen at Miller currently.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? If not, just thank you. That agrees with your very fine presentation.
Thank you.
Next, we have Dr. Kaliefany Johnson for 2022-2023, continuation of United Way of Central Georgia. And this is an action presentation.
Madam Chair, before we begin, I just want to preface this presentation letting you know that we have Dr. Shelton Lang here, United Way, providing the context as there were questions in reference to this particular piece. We also have, want to make sure that you have in your folder some additional addendums. If you don't, we've made copies. That is the status report for '21-22 that I think will add some value to this conversation as well. So my Chief of Staff, Dr. Tika Love, is going to pass those out now.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President Diller, Board members, and Superintendent Dr. Sams. On July 15, 2021, the Board of Education approved and authorized the superintendent to use extra funds to support the United Way of Central Georgia's expansion proposal. The community schools initiative was allocated $97,220 and Reunited was allocated $502,415.50 for a total of $599,261.50 per year, not to exceed $1,198,523 over the '21-22 and '22-23 academic years. The original proposal for the community schools expansion was modified to include only one school, for Hurdell Hunt Communications Magnet Elementary, and the Reunited expansion included 18 schools. During the 2021-2022 school year, Reunited provided 4,739 hours of reading support to 482 students across 138 classrooms. These students' reading growth ranged from 3% to 19%. It is recommended the Board authorize and approve the superintendent to use extra funds to support the continuation of the community schools and Reunited tutoring programs during the '22-23 school year, as proposed by the United Way of Central Georgia, and approved by the Board during the July 2021 meeting in an amount not to exceed $599,261.50. These funds have already been allocated for this purpose based on the Board's predisapproval.
Before you hear the recommendation, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, for the sake of this taking of conversation, I will report. So to your question on Dr. Garrett, the community schools is a strategy. You know, we look at it as a program, it's really a strategy. And so with that, when we're seeing progress, it's a marathon, not a sprint. And so we're trying to build those, realign those systems. And so as of date, we have been working with partners, trying to align partners, getting all of those things in order. But we plan to give a full report, just like we do with our Reunited program, at the end of this academic year. So we're running for a full, formal report. We'll be able to update and provide what we have done in the areas of parent engagement, attendance, principal support, teacher support, and student integrated supports.
So that would not be to the end of this school year?
To the end of this school year. But we are currently still working with partners and doing things.
Yeah, and I noticed that, you know, there were certain studies that had been taken, you know, and all that, but we haven't gotten any data from those that you could share with us.
Well, when I look at the data, I mean, it's more qualitative and storytelling data, which... Now, let me ask you this, so I can make sure I'm understanding. Do you want quantitative data or do you want qualitative data? Because I mean, we have like stories.
I would just like to know, if we're looking at student attendance, which the growth there?
See, so that's quantitative. So that would be, we would compile that and working and bring that at the end of the school year.
And I mean, I certainly, I certainly understand the concept.
Right.
And what we're trying to do. And I truly know that growth is not going to happen overnight. So, you know, I'm just wondering if we have any kind of showing that, you know, we're on the right track.
Right. And so there are four phases of community schools. Exploring, emerging, retiring, and established. We're really between still that exploring and emerging stage. That's why it's such a marathon. But qualitative and looking at some of the things that we've done far as since we began to implement, this year alone, we have worked as staff, the CSU coordinators have worked with schools and we identified like needs, like you're talking about, like those surveys and these assessments, housing, transportation. And so we have worked with many partners, like giving help, telemedicine, we have done some vaccination clinics, some neighborhood mental wellness sessions for seniors and adults and youth. And we are currently working in the plan of how do we work alongside the family engagement facilitators as well in the school, where they stop, where we keep going, where we can keep going. As far as attendance, again, that's more quantitative. And so we are attending attendance meetings like the schools. Then the schools, the principal hold attendance meetings. So we'll be able to work alongside with their staff and to gather that data, compile it, look at how do we impact and how do we work together. So that's what we're working on. Does that answer the question?
Thank you. Are there any more questions?
Thank you for your presentation. Also, going back to the community schools budget of $97,220, I'm showing basically salary and benefits for one person, planning and technical assistance, meeting expenses, supplies. It says parent engagement stipends. Did we spend that money in that same way this past year? So $13,750 on parent stipends?
So actually, no, we did not.
During the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year, Reunited provided four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine hours of reading support to four hundred and eighty-two students across one hundred and thirty-eight classrooms. These students' reading growth ranged from three percent to nineteen percent. It is recommended the Board authorize and approve the superintendent to use ESSR funds to support the continuation of the community schools and Reunited tutoring programs during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, as proposed by the United Way of Central Georgia, and approved by the Board during the July, two thousand twenty-one meeting in an amount not to exceed five hundred, ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty cents. These funds have already been allocated for this purpose based on the Board's predisapproval.
Before you hear the recommendation, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, for the sake of, of conversation, I don't want approvals.
The vice president?
Yes.
Okay. The motion is accepted. Or this recommendation is the other question? All right, of course. Dr. Garrett.
Um, yes, thank you. Thank you for the updates that have been asked. I, I see that we have data on the Reunited program, and I appreciate that. But yet what I have not seen is data related to how the community schools, how the community school at Electric Williams is progressing. We know that they have certain goals that they are looking at, attendance, children being ready to learn, all of the other things that, and parent involved and all of those things. But do we have any data that tells us that we have seen success and growth in those areas?
All right. Reading, uh, board, um, y'all can remember, I thought I was using my microphone, it was a reading board. So we're in the sense that trusted our educational leaders. So to your question on Dr. Garrett, the community schools is a strategy. You know, we look at it as a program, it's really a strategy. And so with that, when we're seeing progress, it's a marathon, not a sprint. And so we're trying to build those, realign those systems. And so as of date, we have been working with partners, trying to align partners, getting all of those things in order. But we plan to give a full report, just like we do with our Reunited program, at the end of this academic year. So we're looking for a full, formal report, where we're able to update and provide what we have done in the areas of parent engagement, attendance, principal support, teacher support, and student integrated supports.
So that would not be to the end of this school year?
To the end of this school year. But we are currently still working with partners and doing things.
Yeah, and I noticed that, you know, there were certain studies that had been taken, you know, and all that, but we haven't gotten any data from those that we, that you could share with us.
Well, when I look at the data, I mean, it's more qualitative and storytelling data, which, now, let me ask you this, so I can make sure I'm understanding. Do you want quantitative data or do you want qualitative data? Because I mean, I have, we have like stories.
I would just like to know, if we're looking at student attendance, which the growth there?
See, so that's quantitative. So that would be, we would compile that and working and bring that at the end of the school year.
And I mean, I certainly, I certainly understand the concept.
Right.
You know, and, and what we're trying to do, and I truly know that growth is not going to happen over a month. So, you know, I'm just wondering if we have any kind of showing that, you know, we're, we're on the right track.
Right. And so there are four phases of community schools, exploring, emerging, retiring, and established. We're really between still that exploring and emerging stage. That's why it's such a marathon. But qualitative and looking at some of the things that we've done far as since we began to implement, this year alone, we have worked as staff, the CSU coordinators have worked with schools and we identified like needs, like you're talking about, like those surveys and these assessments, housing, transportation. And so we have worked with many partners, like giving help, telemedicine, we have done some vaccination clinics, some neighborhood mental wellness sessions for seniors and adults and youth. And we are currently working in the plan of how do we work alongside the family engagement facilitators as well in the school, where they stop, where we keep going, where we can keep going. Um, far as attendance, again, that's more quantitative, and so we are attending attendance meetings like the schools, then the schools, the principal hold attendance meetings. So we'll be able to work alongside with their staff and to gather that data, compile it, look at how do we impact and how do we work together. So that's what we're working on. Does that answer the question?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Are there any more questions? The panel?
Thank you for your presenting presentation. Also, going back to the community schools budget of ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars, I'm showing basically salary and benefits for one person, planning and technical assistance, meeting expenses and supplies. It says parent engagement stipends. Did we spend that money that, in that same way this past year? So thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars on parent stipends?
So actually, no, we did not.
Okay. How was the ninety-seven thousand, two twenty allocated last year as to compare to how it will be allocated this year?
So the applications are the same, however, the full fund was not expended last year.
Okay. And how much of that ninety-seven thousand, two twenty was not expended last year?
Approximately sixty thousand.
Okay, so basically you have thirty-some thousand that was actually spent, and now is for this year, the ninety-seven, so does that carry forward or what happens to that?
So that money is, is reallocated, so that money is not accessible again. So if approved, the community schools will have access to ninety-seven thousand, and then they're going to draw as needed from those funds. So they may not use all of it.
As for the unspent funds, were those reallocated over to Reunited or were they just not spent?
I am not certain about that. I would have to ask Dr. Rogers about that.
And then?
I'll get that information for you.
And then thank you for the data on the results for the Reunited. I shows in the budget that you are going to work with sixteen schools. Appears you actually work with eighteen schools. And then talked about volunteer tutors, parent engagement. So, okay, so will the budget for Reunited change from the original budget?
No, this is the same budget as last year.
Okay. And will the funds be spent according to the budget?
Yes, and all those funds were expended.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Ms. Morton?
I realize that she may not have. I realize you might not have qualitative data. I would have put some qualitative data to tell us what it is you've been doing. And I will disappoint you now. I do know that the budget that has been provided to us, that is essentially taking the budget that got approved last time and buying it by board. I'm very uncomfortable moving forward with this item without what's telling me what the community school is doing. You might not have results necessarily. There should be some individual document that talks about what partnerships you've done, how many parents or families or children you're working with, something that can give you some detail. Because at the end of the day, we're talking about taxpayer money here, and they're going to ask me, when you made a decision regardless of how, I mean, I'm excited with the idea, I like it, I like Reunited, we've supported that for years, I would like a little more data before I move forward. And also, another thing, I would really appreciate if these two items had been split out. Since we have a program we're very familiar with, we have one that's new, you're going to have more data with Reunited than you will with community schools, it would make that process much easier for me. But from my standpoint, I'm not very comfortable moving forward with this item, given the lack of information that I have right now, and also because in fact that I just got a lot of data when I sat down, and really need more kind of stuff.
Thank you, Ms. Morton. Are there any other questions? I have a question. Okay, I'm too, I'm concerned about the data. I'm looking at page three, in the profile with the paragraph, um, Reunited. It shows that two thousand fifteen to sixteen in the book, there were thirty-nine students participating, leading progress seventy-four percent, nineteen to twenty. Then at the bottom it says six to eight percent of the students who have been supported by the R U program are reenact, are above grade up. Yeah, I had some questions about that. These are third grade, right?
K through third.
K through third.
Mm-hmm.
And how many students are we talking about that are reading at or above grade up?
Now, so I'm gonna, let me make sure I'm, when I like to ask, answer questions, I was looking at, when I, the original proposal, so I don't have the, that what we originally presented, that data, I'm not, I can speak, but the sixty-eight percent represents participating students, and we're talking about, we serve about forty to fifty students at each school. And so in that original, if you're referencing the original proposal, that only represented about ten schools, because with these funds, we were able to extend to an additional eight schools. So those ten students, if you look at, I was talking about five hundred and something students. I believe, what, could you, could you tell me what the number is or something? That's the number of students that it represents.
Yeah, I was concerned about six to eight percent. While this looks good, but I haven't seen anywhere, we have six to eight percent of our students reading at grade up.
Not the, that's not referencing the whole Deer County student population.
Right. Well, you're talking about these specific schools that you're working with?
Yes.
Like Bruce, Birdie, Hartman, Heritage, Ingram Park, John Arden, L H Williams, King, Ford, Southfield, Union, and Vet.
Yes.
So this combination, um, K three, we have students, and I don't know how many students we're talking about, but students from these schools that are in this profile are reached six to eight percent, reading at or above grade up.
Yes.
Well, if that's the case, that's going to go up.
Well, I believe that I, uh, put the number of students, that that's the original proposal should have said, it doesn't say how many students that I was referencing in the proposal, and that data chart.
Where, Brian, in the book?
I, I don't know, I don't have a book.
I see twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five hour contributor. I see two hundred and eight hundred, forty-nine students served. I see fifteen hundred, seventy-five classrooms reported.
Could you repeat that number of students served?
Two thousand, eight hundred, forty-nine students served.
Okay, and that's over the course of, we're talking about from two thousand fifteen.
That's from two thousand thirteen to twenty.
Yes, that's, that's from two thousand and fifteen, all the way up. So per year, we serve about, roughly about five hundred students before we receive this funding. Okay. Now, now I could be glancing on the button, but, okay, yes. So this, this graph right here represents six to eight students who have been supported by our Reunited program are reading at or above grade up. For example, at Southfield, we only serve about fifty students. So when you, when we are combining all of the students across all of those ten schools, so if you add that up, it's roughly, and it varies like at L H Williams, because it's a smaller school population, we only serve thirty. At Veterans, which has a larger population, probably do about forty-five or fifty students. And so what this number represents, the sixty-eight percent, is the number of students that the Reunited program serves, not the Deer County student population, just the students that we are serving that have come through our program. Yes?
I understand that. Okay. That was my question.
So let me make sure I understand, could, but could you repeat the question?
All right. We got twelve schools that you're currently serving.
Mm-hmm.
Those are the options. Of the twelve schools, you have a select number of students who participate in your Reunited program.
Yes.
And of the students who participated in the Reunited program, it says six to eight percent of these students who have been supported by the R U program are currently reading at or above, at, reading at or above grade up. And I kind of just figured that.
Could you tell me why, I mean, all I can do is give you, is give you the list of students, you can go look at your test score, but I stand behind my data.
Right.
Um, I stand behind this statistical graph, and I know this for a fact, and it's specific students. Now, remember, we're not talking, you, you, Reunited does not work with the lower, the low, we work with the students in the middle. So there's criteria, these are the students that the staff and academic folk have identified at their schools, the principals, the academic coaches. So I get what you're saying, you disagree with the number, but tell me where you see the gap, because maybe then we can work.
Well, if I had to test those, I would look at it like a thing.
Oh, okay. I got you.
But y'all have presented or presented.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, for the, it's apparent that there's a lingering question that our colleagues have in regards to receiving maybe a status report, even though we'll have a floor report at the end of the school year, but saying how we would like to receive a, I think, it sounds like more of a status report on the status of these two separate programs, and so to allow you more time to prepare that and to bring that back to us. Madam Chair, I move to amend my original motion and now move to table this conversation, uh, this action item until later.
Okay, we already had one motion on the floor.
Yes, ma'am, I just amended that motion, so I think next we'll just take a second.
Second. All right. Is that a first discussion? Um, that in favor, table this recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so we have, and I'm, mind, we have seven ayes to table and one a second. Madam President. So we will table this, lump this recommendation, and I guess it will not be set in question. All right. Thank y'all so much. Madam President, this is a report from instruction, sir. Thank you, Madam President.
Madam President, I'm sorry, I think we also need to formally table I S three, because it's a separate action I S. The two were stapled together, so I think that doesn't, that's, the high I S two.
Please, seven ayes, please, we can, your mic's up.
I S three is the high I S two stapled together. I think we need to formally table that one as well.
Madam President?
Madam President, oh, I'm sorry.
I S three is really I S two, is that correct?
Yeah, if I may, if I may, Madam Chair, I S three was included as an additional resource. Uh, you know, that the bottom has a date of July fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, so we apologize that it confused board members as to it being an action memo for now, but it's not, it's just a reference. Like, for clarification.
All right, so it's saying that we will table I S two. Remember, that can pull that one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will now go to business point service community. Turn on, please. Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first, our presentation item will be monthly financial review, and Ms. Roberts, please continue.
Good afternoon, President Dr. Diller, board members, Superintendent Dr. Sims. This afternoon, we'll be discussing the general fund financial statements for the five months ending November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. Here you'll see the balance sheet, where total assets are one hundred and eleven point nine million dollars, total liabilities twenty-seven point two million, total fund balance eighty-four point six million. Here is the statement of revenue and expenditures for the general fund for the five-month period ending November thirtieth. Total revenues, the approved budget was two hundred and eleven point two million. Year-to-date receipts, one hundred and nine point seven million. This is fifty-one point nine percent of the budget has been received to date. Expenditure budget, two hundred and nineteen point nine million. Expenditures to date, ninety-three point six million. Encumbered, eight point eight million for a total committed to date of a hundred and two point four million, which leaves a remaining budget of a hundred and seventeen point four million. Forty-six point five nine percent of the budget has been committed to date. Here is the pie graph that shows fifty-two percent of the general fund revenue is from local sources, forty-five percent from state sources, three percent from federal sources. Here is the expenditures by function, showing the largest percentage is, of course, from instruction, our primary goal, fifty-nine percent. If you add to that pupil services of four percent, and improvement of instructional services of five percent, these three categories, which is directly in the classroom and supportive that classroom teacher, is sixty-seven percent of our general fund expenditures. Next, we'll look at the financial statements for all of our funds combined. Here you'll see that total assets, seven hundred and twenty-four point five million, total liabilities, sixty-seven point two, and total fund balance, six hundred and fifty-seven point three million. Here is the cash and investment schedule for all funds as of November thirtieth. Cash on hand, ten point nine million, investments, one hundred and forty point five million, for total liquid assets of a hundred and fifty-one point three million. This shows that our, of all of our funds combined, capital assets is seventy-three percent of assets, and our receivables, five percent, investments, nineteen percent, cash, two percent. Here we have our statement of revenue and expenditures. Revenues for all of our funds combined, approved budget is three hundred and eighty-eight point five million. Receipts to date, a hundred and sixty-nine point eight million. This is forty-three point eight four percent of our budget has been received to date. Our total approved budget and expenditures, four hundred and six point one million, expended to date, one hundred and forty-eight point eight million, with forty-one point nine million encumbered, for total commitments of a hundred and ninety point seven million, which is forty-six point nine percent of the total approved budget has been committed to date. Next is an update on ESSR, our funds, and you'll see a more in-depth presentation in a few minutes. But this, and I'll say that these numbers may be just slightly different from the presentation, presentation that you'll see, because this is when we actually close the books of November, whereas the report that I'm going to show in a few minutes was as of November the twenty-ninth. So for cares, you'll see here that the original budget was fifty-five point three million. Cumulative committed is fifty-five point three million. So we have spent all but thirty-eight thousand as of the end of November. You'll see on the other report, it was two hundred and eighty-seven thousand, so some funds were spent between the time that report and this report was done. The end of this award is September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, so we're one hundred percent confident that all of these funds will be spent. A R P, hundred point four million. The remaining budget at this point was sixty-two point six, and this one will end September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Next, we're going to have an update on our ESFLOS. For the twenty sixteen ESFLOS program, cumulative receipts, a hundred and seventy point one million. Expenditures have been a hundred and sixty-six point nine million, with encumbrances of one point one million, total committed being a hundred and sixty-eight million. Cash and investments at the end of November were three point one million. For the two thousand twenty-one project, November receipts have continued to be above what we had originally projected at three point four million. Cumulative receipts and interest income to date, seventy-two point five million for this project. Cumulative expenditures have been thirty-three point five million, with encumbered to date thirteen point eight million, for total commitments of forty-seven point three, and cash and investments at the end of November were thirty-nine million. For our bonds of two thousand twenty, which was our technology project, you'll see that sixteen point one million has been expended of the original seventeen point two million that we received in bond proceeds and interest. Cash and investments yet to be spent is one point two million. And in our debt service account, we had cash and investments at four point four million. That is the end of the presentation for our financials.
Thank you for your presentation. Does anyone have any questions? All right, continuing on, our next item is the budget calendar, number F S S two. All right, continuing on, our next item is the budget calendar, number F S S two.
We have the budget, general fund budget amendment.
I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, the general fund budget is a fluid document which requires revisions as new data is received, which affects three components, the beginning fund balance, revenues, and expenditures. Budget amendment number one revises all three of these components. FY two thousand twenty-two ended with a fund balance ten million, one hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars higher than was what was originally projected. That increase was due to a reinstatement in FY twenty-two of four point five million dollars of austerity reduction in the Q B E revenue, higher tax revenues received, lower salary and benefit expenditures because of high vacancy rates in our staffing. And then our state revenues are being reduced by fifty-two thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars at this time to account for changes in the Q B E allotment sheets from initial projections. And then expenditures are being increased by two million, thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-seven thousand as a result of moving one point four million dollars of V I P Academy expenditures that had been charged to A R P, but now have been moved to the general fund since the Academy is a school and is being funded through Q B E revenue. Also, increasing legal fees by a hundred thousand, as you may remember, was brought to the board back in June of two thousand twenty-two. So this is not new amount, this is what you've already seen before. Also, it's increasing consultants by four hundred and forty-seven thousand, five sixty-seven, which also includes Gallup, which you've seen and approved before, along with a few other consulting calls that were below the one hundred and fifty thousand dollar board threshold. It also includes eighty-one thousand, eight hundred dollar increase for the Martin M L K Walkway that was done, that you also approved at a prior board meeting. So all of these changes shows a net increase of eight million, ninety-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars to, that leaves the ending fund balance now to be projected at fifty-six million, eight hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars. This makes the ratio of fund balance to expenditures at twenty-five point six eight percent. And in line of new information that we just received, that's very, it's good to have that fund balance. As of yesterday, we received information from the governor's office about information on state health benefits that's going to change effective, if approved, that will change January first, two thousand twenty-three. It's actually the highest rate change that we've ever had, that for certified staff, the rate per month, per employee is going to change from nine hundred and forty-five dollars a month to one thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars a month. This is a six hundred and thirty-five dollar a month change for the employer's share for our certified staff. So of course, Q B E will pay for some of our certified staff, the ones that we earn. Of course, we have more certified staff than they will fund. So just in rough estimates, doing it today, it's going to cost us for just that six-month period about three hundred thousand dollars for this increase. So annualizing that for next year, that's a six hundred thousand dollar increase. Now, for FY twenty-four, they're going to also have that same dollar increase for all of our classified staff, which they do not fund at all. That can cause us an additional six million dollars. So that large eight million dollar fund balance increase that I just showed you is about to be eaten up with the health insurance changes, not even including the information that we received on salary increases. The governor's also recommending a two thousand dollar increase for our certified staff. Well, once again, they fund that two thousand increase for the certified staff that they cover. They do not include Q B E revenue to cover for those physicians that we fund and accept extra, nor do they include an increase for our classified staff, which we usually, as practice, want to give our classified staff a raise at the same time we give our certified. So that's just the information as we go into the FY twenty-four budget cycle to be prepared to start thinking of. So, so the recommendation for this budget amendment number one, it's recommended that the Board of Education approves budget amendment number one for the FY two thousand twenty-three general fund budget with a revised projected ending fund balance of fifty-six million, eight hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars, knowing that I will also be bringing you back budget amendment number two with these changes once the major budget has officially been approved.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Morton, seconded by Dr. Woodford. Are there any questions? And thank you for your good and questionably good news.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. I must say, I'm very concerned by the news you just shared. But just to seek clarification, is this proposal in the governor's FY twenty-three close less than what you said on the twenty-four?
The, for the certified state health increase is in the amended FY twenty-three budget, would be effective January first, two thousand twenty-three. So once that is approved, then we would retroactively have to pay for that state health cost. We would also receive retroactively Q B E revenue for those physicians that they would fund. But then we would pay the difference of what they do not fund for twenty-three. So luckily, we do have the additional fund balance that would cover it.
Thank you.
Dr. Dillard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Little stat, who was on the hand? What's your projection for a fund balance, the upcoming fund balance with the news that you shared with us today?
Well, it would, it would then be fifty-six million, five hundred and ten thousand with the additional three hundred thousand that it would cost for the employees that Q B E would not cover. So it's only going to cost an additional three hundred thousand for FY twenty-three. The large cost is going to be in FY twenty-four when they increase it for our classified staff. That's the large portion that the Q B E revenue will not increase, but the cost will increase.
And that's my concern too, as we look at two thousand twenty-four.
Mine too.
Yes, so do you have any projections or anything positive news you can share with us?
Not yet, since I just received this information yesterday. I'm still absorbing it myself and trying to think of all the ways that we will. Luckily, we do have a large fund balance, and I'm thinking the state had a larger fund balance than they had expected. They saw that a lot of districts have a larger fund balance than expected, and they helped us have a plan to bring it back down to the fifteen percent.
Well, we'll await your prophecy. Thank you, thank you so much for this wonderful report. Inspired.
You've heard the motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion passes unanimously and will be sent to the consent agenda. The next item, number F S S three, is the fiscal two thousand twenty-four budget and current milledage rate calendar.
Board policy D C C A directs administration annually to provide a budget calendar for the ensuing fiscal year. This calendar must provide target days for meetings, such as budget work sessions, public hearings, committee and board meetings for tentative and final adoption of the budget. Attached for your review is the calendar of Board of Education meetings and public hearings for the FY two thousand twenty-four budget and calendar year two thousand twenty-three milledage rate, which will serve to guide us through the budget process. The recommendation, it is recommended that the Dill County Board of Education approve the district's proposed FY two thousand twenty-four budget and calendar year two thousand twenty-three milledage rate calendar.
You've heard the recommendation, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Dr. Woodford, seconded by Dr. Garrett. Are there any questions? Mr. Green.
I just have one question. When I looked at the potential for public hearings, that we did not hold back the milledage rate and consent would be a tax increase, basically once red. I note that the two, the first two hearings are on the same day, one being in the morning, one being in the evening. I haven't been on the boards historically. We've had one of those hearings, it's normal, it's supposed to be on the same day.
It has been in the past. Now, it's been a while, quite a few years since we've had to have the public hearing, since we haven't raised taxes. But yes, it's often that they are on the same day, one in the morning and then one in the evening for people that work different shifts.
Are there other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion carries unanimously and is sent to the consent agenda. And Ms. Roberts, keeping you busy. The next item is number F S S four, the A R P and cares update presentation.
Okay, this is an update for these programs, and it is a few days before we did actually close the books for November. Here you'll see the original grant award notification. This first one is for our American Rescue Program grant. It is the period of availability is March twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-one to September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. But with the one-year tithes carryover, it's extended to September thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, with a total budget of one hundred million, three seventy-two, three seventy-four. Here is the original breakdown of how we are planning on spending the money, and that basically is still staying the same, although we may have made budget amendments between specific items. You'll see that a lot of the, the main percentages are in activities to address learning loss. Twenty-seven point eight nine percent is for those administering and assessing high-quality assessments. And then activities to address other needs, unique needs of at-risk populations, thirty-one point twenty-two percent. And then here, we're going to look at how have we actually utilized our A R P funding. I want first to discuss that how we do budget amendments. We follow the same process for all of our federal programs as we do our general fund. If anything is over one hundred and fifty thousand, we bring it to the board for your approval. So on this list, anything that you see that has a writing highlighted in red, you've already approved them, they've come to you, and you've approved these items and any adjustments that would require a budget amendment. So that process is approved. Anything that's under one hundred and fifty, we budget amend within our normal finance and federal programs process. Also, anything, federal programs have a little bit even higher level than general fund, that there are certain items that the Georgia Department of Education and their federal programs department also has to approve before we can spend, especially if it's anything construction-related, equipment-related, and that we have to get permission from them before we can amend a budget. So it goes through their process also. Also want to say that in the original A R P budget, we did have roughly four point eight million dollars in both the FY twenty-three and twenty-four budget for continuity of services. If you remember back when COVID first hit, austerity reductions were given as part of the stated Q B E revenue. That first year, we thought we were going to get roughly eleven million dollars of austerity. So cares, that first year of cares that we received that ten million dollars, the majority of it was spent on services, staffing that were at the central office that we paid for through cares money. And we had budgeted in A R P to, to move those physicians to A R P once we utilized that cares. Well, then the state revenues came in higher than we thought, and the governor reinstated austerity, we no longer had austerity. So we did not need to use A R P for those continuity of services. Those salaries were moved back into the general fund, and we did not use our federal funds for those services. So that money was reallocated. Part of the things that we reallocated, those salary benefits out of that, when you received that big long budget from A R P for federal programs at the beginning, there was like fifteen million dollars of salary benefits in there. So roughly eight million of that salary benefits wasn't needed anymore. So it was used, one, to pay for the retention payment that's going to be paid out in February that you approved back in December. Also, for some of the technology projects that you approved. So that's how some of that money has been reallocated since the original budget. So what, how have we used the A R P funding? We currently are employing one hundred and thirty-six staff members. This is teachers, coaches, attendants, clerks. So I won't read all of these, but you'll see the different types of positions that we are funding. We also have ninety-four Kelly Services professionals that we are having in our support of our schools. We did pay for some of V I P Academy support. You saw, you saw that some of that now is coming out of the general fund. But those first years, when it was a program, not a school, A R P did pay for it, and it is still paying for some of V I P Academy. Those things that are over and above that Q B E does not pay for. Also, it's paid for retention and recruitment, professional development, consultants. The leader in me, that has been paid for out of A R P. Field trips, technology support, community and schools, and literacy support, United Way, the Ag Barn, the greenhouse at Hurd, Culinary Learning Lab, the food truck, courtroom modification at Southwest, nursing healthcare at Ballard, pathway enhancements, nursing healthcare at Ballard, sitry rooms, phase one is complete, we're now working on phase two, the flatbed printer for the graphic design pathway, the accidental protection plan for our one-on-one student devices, and they are in need of repair, removing and replacing carpet or flooring at Hill Mountains End. And these are just some of the items that we use. It's not all inclusive by any means. And what are some of the items that are remaining? We still have the salary and benefits for those physicians that I mentioned for the remainder of this fiscal year and also for fiscal year twenty-four. HVAC systems, technology panels, field trips, summer school. They still will utilize some of the remaining funds. So now let's get into the actual numbers. So this file is the cumulative expenditures by function. So you'll see as of November the twenty-ninth, total expenditures and encumbrances is forty-five point one million. You see the largest component is twenty-one point five million in instruction function. This is forty-seven point seven percent of all of the. This is forty-seven point seven percent of all of the commitments. And if you add together the people services, the improvement of instructional services and in the staff training, those categories that I'm usually combining in the general fund, that's seventy-two percent. So we are spending the A R P funds in the same type of way that we are spending our general fund. We're concentrating on instruction, which is our core, what, core what we spend, our core values and what we need to spend our money on. Uncommitted is fifty-five point three million. So that's what we're going to spend, the salaries and the benefits for the remaining of this year, next year, and those other items I mentioned. So the plan is that all of that fifty-five point three million will be spent. Okay, this just shows the same information by pie graph. This is the same information, just looked at by classification. So it shows that at the school level, sixty-one point two percent of what has been expended is in salaries and benefits, with the other being in operation. At the district level, fifteen point five percent is in salary and benefits, with the remainder in operation. And grand total, thirty-five percent is in benefits and salaries. And this again is showing cumulatively that majority of it is spent in operations, which is what we want to see because we know we can't maintain a lot of positions once A R P money ends. This looks at it same way, but combines it all together. So you see that salary benefits and operations and encumbrances, forty-five point one million has been encumbered and committed to date compared to that one hundred point four million dollar budget. In total, forty-four point nine percent has been expended today. The next few pages just takes it and breaks down the same information by fiscal years, or you'll see all three fiscal years by facility. So how much each school and each area within the district has spent out of their individual budgets and encumbered. So it comes up to the same amount being expended and committed. Here are the positions. As discussed earlier, we had two hundred and fifty-nine positions that were approved in that original budget. Currently, as of today, we have a hundred and thirty-six positions that are filled with ninety-four Kelly Services paraprofessionals. So our total of two hundred and thirty staff members with twenty-nine vacancies. And that funding, those vacancy dollars are being reallocated for this technology and HVAC and other salaries for the retention bonuses. So that's the end of the A R P recap. Next, we'll look at CARES. CARES is almost complete. So it totally, if you look at CARES one and two, it's fifty-five point three million. How have we used it? Well, currently we have nine staff members that we're still paying for. We originally, in those first two years, we did have seventy, twenty-seven employees. Those are those continuity of services employees that we did pay in those first two years. We paid, retention and recruitment paid in that first, first time we paid it. We also, if you'll remember, paid hazard pay that first year of COVID, COVID, when our bus drivers and our school nutrition were delivering meals on the buses and working where other people were working at home. We also have paid summer school. We've supported school nutrition because all of our staff and school nutrition still were working and were being paid even though our participation rate was lower. We also had increased costs in food, so we had to supplement their income because we were receiving less federal revenue, but increased cost. We also have funded professional development, some contracts and renewals, technology. We did some of the one-on-one devices out of this funding. We also did some software support, textbooks, classroom support for supplies. We purchased those touch水水fountains for all of the schools. Also Plexiglas at the reception areas in the schools. The ionization of all of our HVAC systems and our buses. You'll remember, we did the temperature streaming kiosks, thermometers, face shields, death shields. All of those P P E. Also, we bought student headsets and microphones. And here's a recount of the dollars by fiscal year. You'll see for the original budget of fifty-five point three million, total expenditures was fifty-four point one million. We have currently eighty, eight, a hundred and eighty-five thousand in encumbrances, so total committed fifty-five million with two hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight oh seven uncommitted. So as of the time this report was run, ninety-nine point four eight percent had been committed. And this is the same information by function. So you'll see, once again, if you add those top functions that are directly related to that classroom and support of that classroom, forty-five point six percent is in that area. The reason that's a little bit lower than you normally would expect is because those continuity of services of all those positions that we paid those first two years that when we had the austerity reductions from state revenue. You'll see that spread out through the central office and business services where some of those salaries were paid that normally would not be. And this is just the pie graph of that same information. And once again, this is by school, by fiscal year. You'll see this program ran from F Y twenty and still is running, will run through September of F Y twenty-four. And that is the end of my presentation.
Thank you for your presentation. Appreciate the information. Are there any questions?
I do have a couple of questions. I thank you very much for the information, broken down by school, breaking down a million dollars per school. How much has been expended? Are the funds being basically expended according to what was in here originally? Or have there been major changes?
I wouldn't say there's been major changes. There have been some changes because there were some things that were put in that original budget that the state came back and said, no, you cannot do that. So some things had to be changed. For instance, one of the things, we had some security cameras that were in that original budget. They denied those and said, no, that's not something that we're going to allow. So we had to replace those with another type of expenditure. Also, some of those vacancies that we've had throughout the years, that money has been reallocated. But it's still within the school. Still within the school. Now, if it's not spent within that time period though, it will be reallocated to the district because we don't want to leave any dollars on the table.
And then, let's see, then there was the district personnel and non-personnel budgets which basically came out to about sixty-five million dollars. And I don't see approximately, I mean, I see how what we've expended and encumbered up to date, but really not compared to this original budget. I understand that fifteen million, six sixty-two really came down to about eight million or seven million based on moving eight million salaries to the general fund. In terms of the sixty-five million, do we, basically what I'm asking is, do we have a budget for the fifty-five million that has not yet been encumbered or spent?
The majority of that is those positions that we currently have, a hundred and thirty-five and the Kelly, ninety-four. Those, plus we still have roughly seven million dollars of HVAC systems that has not been spent yet. We have the summer school that has not been spent for both this year and for twenty-four. We have some technology money that hasn't been spent for panels for the schools. So there, there is a budget, yes. Okay.
Chair, let me quickly add, we've had extensive discussion about this same piece. And I would say that Dr. Rogers and her team, combined with Dr. Finance's team, Dr. Fine Job, in reference to ongoing tracking of expenditures, assuring where those dollars are along with the timeline associated with it. And as a result of that conversation, I have all the confidence in the world that we will not be returning money. We will continue to stay within the scope. And we already have a plan as example, if, as you look at the, the school level budgets, if there is a time that comes where there's money left, Dr. Rogers and her team have already thought through along the C D campus scenarios, that's how we can effectively reallocate those funds and use them in such a way that helps meet the goals that we've established.
Thank you. Other questions? Greatly appreciate your presentation. The next item, again, Ms. Roberts and our auditor, I'm sure will be coming up, for a presentation of the fiscal year twenty twenty-two audit.
Yes, I would like to introduce Hope Hennegras, she's a partner with Walden and Jenkins that handles our audit each year.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Good afternoon, President Dr. Diller, board members, Superintendent Dr. Sims. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you all this afternoon. Today, I believe you have at your table a greenbound document. That's your annual comprehensive financial report or your acter. It's also your audited financial statements for the year ended six thirty twenty-two. I promise we are not going to go through every page of this two-hundred-something-page document. Sharon, can I have?
They do.
Okay. You also have what's called the auditor's discussion and analysis. It's just our opportunity to go through and kind of give you some information about the audit as well as required communications and some information on upcoming standards. Like I said, I'm going to be brief today because we met last week with your audit committee and whenever everything extensively. To summarize, I just want to say that the, the audit was great. You all received what's called an unmodified opinion. That's a clean opinion. That's the best opinion you can get. We also had no findings. Congratulations to your native team and board as well for its governance and support in that area. In relation to the, the acter, this is an expanded document. This is above and beyond the basic requirements. Y'all are one of a handful of districts in the, in the state that goes above and beyond and submits their document for an award. So just kudos to you all for kind of raising that bar as far as your financial reporting beyond the basic amount that's required. Other than that, you all had strong fund balance as of June thirtieth, twenty-two and it sounds like the governor and the state have made a plan for that fund balance. So aren't you glad that you had it? It represented about twenty-four percent of annual operations if you consider that, hey, you extend money equally over every month, which of course you don't. That's really strong when you consider the fact that as of June thirtieth, that's kind of the, the skiniest part of your year from a cash flow perspective and that helps carry you through the summer way away when the tax money come in again in the fall. As far as federal expenditures, y'all had about ninety-five million in federal expenditures. We tested approximately fifty percent of those expenditures, mainly your ESTR program, which includes CARES one, CARES two, and your A R P ESTR three. And again, all the i's are dotted, all the t's are crossed there. And we also tested your emergency connectivity program, which is kind of the A R P portion of E-Rate, for lack of a better explanation. So we tested both of those programs, representing again about fifty percent of your total expenditures if that ever had to be in order. So just kudos to your native team, Ms. Roberts and her staff. You did a great job. We always appreciate the opportunity to come and work with them and with you all. And I just want to commend the district on its putting a good focus on financial reporting and doing things the right way. Because, you know, we don't get the opportunity to go to every government that we work with and we work with over six hundred and fifty governments throughout the soundings and say, you know, you did a great job, you had no findings, and you're going above and beyond the basic requirements. So just kudos to you for all the great initiatives y'all have going on from a financial reporting perspective. And that's really all I had to share with you all today. I'd be glad if you had any questions that you might have.
Ms., thank you so much for your presentation and thank you for blessing this very strong report. And thank you, Ms. Roberts and your team, for the great work that you do every single day. Dr. Diller.
I just want to thank you all for your service to our Board of Education. And kudos. I don't even know what words to use for Ms. Roberts and her financial stuff. Over the years that I've been here, I've been so proud. Matter of fact, as, as years as an educator, I've been so proud of you and your team and what you have done. You've done everything the right way for the right reason and you make us look good. Taxpayers are proud of you and the work you've done and how you take care of the money of taxpayers. Congratulations to you, Ms. Roberts and your fine team. Excellent job, well done. Thank you. And thank you for your service to our board. That means you're excellent too. You've all been around a long time. And because of us, this board, you have taken on all these other schools in the state of Georgia. And it's all because of us. It started with us.
Yes, ma'am. That is correct.
That is correct. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Other questions or comments? Thank you again. Thank you. That concludes the work of the School Support Services Committee. Number F S S two and F S S three move, will move to consent agenda and that concludes. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. At this time, we're going to move to Policies and Rules Committee chaired by Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, Madam President. The Policy and Rules Committee will now come to order. We'll welcome this candidate to the podium. College, we have three items for second reading tonight that we'll take action on and four items for first reading. We start with P R one, I M B D, media centers.
Good afternoon, President Dr. Diller, board members, and Superintendent Dr. Sims. Good to see everyone. Good afternoon. The district is presenting Policy I M B D, Media Centers for Second Reading. There are, there were no changes made to the Policy I M B D, twenty-first and second reading. There was a minor change made to Regulation I M B D Form One based on input received from a media specialist in the district. The revised version of the regulation provides that school principals will appoint members to serve on the school technology media committee with input from the media specialist. It is recommended that the Bev County Board of Education approve the revision of Policy I M B D, Media Centers.
College, you heard the recommendations. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Woodford, second, second by Mr. Green. Are there any questions? Okay, none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. The ayes have, the passes, you can't listen. We now move on to Policy M F B, Student Teaching and Internships.
The district is presenting Policy M F B, Student Teaching and Internships for Second Rea- Reading. There have been no changes to Policy M F B since the first reading. It is recommended that the Bev County Board of Education approve the revision of Policy M F B, Student Teaching and Internship.
College, you present the recommendations. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Moved by, motion by Dr. Garrett.
Seven.
Second by Ms. Johnson. Are there any questions? Okay, none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. Ayes have, the passes, you can't listen. Now move on to P R three, B C A C, Special Board Meeting.
The district is presenting Policy B C A C, Special Board Meetings for Second Reading. There have been no changes made to Policy B C A C since the first reading. It is recommended that the Bev County Board of Education approve the revision of Policy B C A C, Second, Special Board Meetings.
Thank you. You heard the recommendation. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Johnson.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hadler. Second by Ms. Hamilton. Are there any questions? Okay, none. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say rye. The ayes have, that passes unanimously. We now move to Policy V C A E Public Hearing, first reading.
The district is presenting Policy V C A E Public Hearings for First Reading. Revised Policy V C A E Public Hearings sets forth that a hearing before the board may be required under federal or state law for board policy. State Board of Education Rule 160-1-3-04 School Law Triangles and Appeals sets forth the hearing procedures a local board must adopt. These procedures are set forth in Section B of the revised policy. The district will post Policy V C A E Public Hearings Assembly to receive input from the board members and stakeholders for 30 days. The policy will be brought to the next board meeting for second reading and final adoption and approval by the board.
Thank you. Policy I B A Basic Program.
The district is presenting Policy I B A Basic Program for First Reading. Minor changes are made to Policy I B A Basic Programs to make this policy consistent with other policies. Next steps will be as previously stated.
Making Policy K N B A Complaints About Instructional Materials.
The district is presenting Policy K N B A Complaints About Instructional Materials for First Reading. Policy K N B A is being recommended for rescission. The requirements outlined in this policy are being moved to new regulation I F A A R2 Instructional Materials Selection and Adoption slash reconsideration of instructional materials. A review of other board policies found that Policy K N B A is not commonly used by other school districts. The complaint and review procedures provided in Policy K N B A are commonly addressed in the I or Instructional Programs section in other board policy manuals. The district will advise the public that it is considering the rescission of Policy K N B A Complaints About Instructional Materials Assembly, and this policy will be brought to the next board meeting for a final determination by the board on rescission.
And following Policy I F A A Instructional Materials Selection and Adoption.
The district is presenting Policy I F A A Instructional Materials Selection and Adoption for First Reading. Minor revisions are made to Policy I F A A Instructional Materials Selection and Adoption to provide that the superintendent and or designate, which we will be adding that in the second reading, before we break it up to second reading, with the authority to develop a regulation addressing the review process and any accompanying forms for the reconsideration of the selection of instructional materials. Minor changes are also made to Policy I F A A to make this policy consistent with other district policies. There is a new regulation, I F A A R2 Instructional Materials Selection and Adoption, reconsideration of instructional materials, and it is created to outline the complaint and review process for instructional materials that is currently contained in Policy K N B A Complaints and Instructional Materials. The new regulation contains review procedures at the school and district level with the opportunity to appeal to the Board of Education. New exhibit I F A A E1 contains the request for reconsideration of instructional materials form. The district will post I F A A Instructional Materials and Adoption and the accompanying documents on assembly to receive input from the board and stakeholders for 30 days. The policy will be brought to the next board meeting for second reading and final board adoption and approval.
Thank you. Madam President, PR1, PR2, and PR3 all pass unanimously. Only 60% present. This completes the work. The policy goes live.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. At this time, we will move to the Personnel Services Committee, chaired by Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Madam President. In a period that we have need for executive session, we entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of personnel matters, future acquisition of property, pending litigation, school safety, and cybersecurity. So moved by Dr. Woodford.
No.
Second by Ms. Johnson. All who are favored going into executive session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
On the same side, Madam President, we're in executive session.
...
Aye.
The floor is same side. Madam President, PS one and PS two passed unanimously and will be sent to the consent committee. And that concludes the business of the personnel service.
Thank you, sir. For your information, FI one through FI three is for your pleasure, your reading time. So at this time, the committee is now adjourned.
19, 2023 at 6:30 PM. We are now going to begin our meeting with the pledge from Na'isha Worthy, 8th grader Howard Middle School. Na'isha, I hope I pronounced your name correctly. I've been practicing. Tell me, did I pronounce it?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the God of justice, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam President. Now we'll have invocation by our wonderful Superintendent Dr. Dan Sams. Dr. Sams?
Thank you, Madam President. Let us pray. Our dear Father God in heaven, we are just so incredibly thankful that you've allowed us to come on this time side of a brand-new gift. We thank you for protecting us and holding us close when we needed you over the holidays, for allowing us this opportunity to come together in this board meeting. More than anything, Father, I'm just thankful for this grand opportunity and this unique opportunity for us to have a field house that is emblematic of what we need every single day. Our students, our parents, our district leadership, our teachers, our leaders, our community partners, our faith leaders, and our dear board gathered together for one purpose. And I pray, Father, that as we embark upon this first board meeting of this year, that as we look upon these audiences and as we see ourselves together, that this represents the way that we move for the remainder of this school year together and that we take on a spirit of togetherness, collaboration, and support of one another such that everything that we intend to accomplish through our students and for our students because of our hard work, we indeed make it happen. Thank you, Father God, for this board. And we pray that you will continue to bless them with a heart for our children, with a mind that is steady and the willingness to work together for the good of our students, everything that we do, and for this great district to make our city of Mayville as great as it can possibly be. Thank you in advance for blessing our efforts throughout this time. And we just pray that you will be pleased in all of our doings in such a way, Father, that we can accomplish everything that you would have us to accomplish. In his name we ask it all. Amen.
Thank you, Doctor. At this time, we are going to have Superintendent Tom and Dr. Sams.
Thank you once again, Madam President. And let me say good evening to this filled room. Oh, all of this good and juicy stuff that we're gonna celebrate. I'm just glad to see all of you and I'm even more happy at this time to share a few highlights from our past month that I'm excited to give to you. Let's talk about the artwork first. For first, thank you to Howard High School for the beautiful artwork featured in the room this month. January is the month of new beginnings and resolutions. January is also named for the god Janus who had two faces, one face looking forward to the future but the other face looking to the past. 2023 is a year of renewal while at the same time we remember past experiences. So we asked our Howard High art students to read poetry about making choices and create artwork inspired by one of the given poems. The poems included were Declaration by Fred Applehans, Invictus by William Ernest Hemlitt, The Road Not Taken by Robert Frost, and Perseverance by Johann B. Wagner. We also asked students to share their goals and dreams for 2023 and these are reflected in the photos you see. Let's talk athletic certifications. Recently, three of our athletic administrators were recognized with certification by the NIAA National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association. This voluntary certification process involves evaluation of each candidate's background and experience as well as a written examination. And accepted candidates join an elite group of interscholastic athletic administrators nationwide. Congratulations to Kevin Grooms, District AD, a certified master athletic administrator; Jennifer Raymond, Miller Magnet Middle School, a certified athletic AD; and Dr. Candace Roberson, Westside High School, also a certified athletic administrator. We are proud of this accomplishment and are grateful that our student athletes are guided by such exemplary leadership. Dr. Clap at any time, Phil. I'm not gonna let you clap, but let me listen and let your spirit lead you. This week, Westside High School and Sherley Construction hosted a ribbon cutting for the new tennis center at Westside. This center is home to six new courts, bleachers, sheltered areas, and even pickleball markings on some of the courts. "I know nothing saved me as a kid and I'm just glad that we have this opportunity today," said Westside Athletic Director Dr. Candace Roberson as she engaged with the crowd. On a special note, the photos here were taken by Westside High School class of 2022 graduate Ramondo McCrery who received a tennis scholarship to Fort Valley State University where he is currently enrolled. How special! How special that he came back to help celebrate this exciting moment at Westside. Let's talk industry tours. Thank you to the Making Bev County Industrial Authority for hosting an industry day for our 30 counselors and principals from our middle and high schools. During this full-day event, participants toured numerous industries to learn about the opportunities available to students after graduation. Thank you to Coca-Cola Bottling Company, United Incorporated, Amazon.com, JD Irving Limited, Elliot Machine Shop, YKK USA, Kumho Tire USA, and Dean Baldwin Pain for opening your doors to our educators. We are thankful to collaborate with MBCIA and Industries to provide students with the ability to build skill sets that match the real-world opportunities available to them. Ah, the little free library. It is important for our students to have access to opportunities. And last week, Hartley Elementary School held a ribbon cutting for a new opportunity that will give back and support the community. Hartley Elementary's new little free library allows students to borrow books to read at any time by simply walking up and choosing one from the shelves. Community partners are invited to donate their favorite books to the library, which is part of the school's selection for the Impact Library Award, the grant that funded this little free library. Reach Scholars. This month, we surprised middle school students around the district by letting them know they are Reach Scholars. The Reach Scholarship Program was launched in 2012 and is a needs-based mentorship and scholarship program designed to encourage students starting in middle school to persist in their educational pursuits. Students are provided with the academic, social, and financial support needed to graduate from high school, attend to college, achieve post-secondary success, and be prepared for the 21st century workforce. Let us watch this video together to see who our newest Reach Scholars are in Bev County. I will say something really good, y'all.
Yeah, thanks.
And just know I was so happy because I think the Reach Scholarship amount is $10,000 that you received in middle school in preparation for the remainder of your K-12 career. So let's give a hand, Father God in heaven. Let's talk about the barn at Gruffland. The district officially opened the new barn for the agriculture departments at Gruffland High School and Gruffland Middle School this month. This barn was funded through the American Recovery Plan and will support an ongoing partnership with Newberry Dairy as well as other livestock initiatives. We're just not here to cut a ribbon on a building. Gruffland High Principal Dr. Wendy Poole has shared with the crowd.
Throughout this time, and we just pray that you will be pleased in all of our doings. In such a way, Father, that we can accomplish everything that you would have us to accomplish. In his name, we ask it all. Amen.
Yes, thank you, Doctor. Thank you. At this time, we are going to have superintendent comments by our superintendent.
Thank you once again, Madam President, and let me say good evening to this filled room. Oh, all of this good and juicy stuff that we're gonna celebrate. I'm just glad to see all of you, and I'm even more happy at this time to share a few highlights from our past month that I'm excited to give to you. Let's talk about the artwork at first, for first. Thank you to Howard High School for the beautiful artwork featured in the room this month. January is the month of new beginnings and resolutions. January is also named for the god Janus, who had two faces. One face looking forward to the future, but the other face looking to the past. Two thousand twenty-three is a year of renewal, while at the same time, we remember past experiences. So we asked our Howard High art students to read poetry about making choices and create artwork inspired by one of the given poems. The poems included were Declaration by Fred Applehans, Invictus by William Ernest Hindley, The Road Not Taken by Robert Frost, and Perseverance by Johann B. Wagner. We also asked students to share their goals and dreams for two thousand twenty-three, and these are reflected in the photos you see. Let's talk athletic certifications. Recently, three of our athletic administrators were recognized with certification by the NIAA National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association. This voluntary certification process involves evaluation of each candidate's background and experience, as well as a written examination, and accepted candidates join an elite group of interscholastic athletic administrations, administrators nationwide. Congratulations to Kevin Grooms, District AD, a certified master athletic administrator; Jennifer Raymond, Miller Magnet Middle School, a certified athletic AD; and Dr. Candace Roberson, Westside High School, also a certified athletic administrator. We are proud of this accomplishment and are grateful that our student athletes are guided by such exemplary leadership. Dr. Clap at any time, Phil. I'm not gonna let you clap, but let me listen and let your spirit lead you. This week, Westside High School and Sherley Construction hosted a ribbon cutting for the new tennis center at Westside. This center is home to six new courts, bleachers, sheltered areas, and even pickleball markings on some of the courts. "I know nothing saved me as a kid," and I'm just glad that we have this opportunity today, said Westside Athletic Director Dr. Candace Roberson as she engaged with the crowd. On a special note, the photos here were taken by Westside High School class of two thousand twenty-two graduate, Ramondo McCrery, who received a tennis scholarship to Fort Valley State University, where he is currently enrolled. How special! How special that he came back to help celebrate this exciting moment at Westside. Let's talk industry tours. Thank you to the Making Bay County Industrial Authority for hosting an industry day for our thirty counselors and principals from our middle and high schools. During this full-day event, participants toured numerous industries to learn about the opportunities available to students after graduation. Thank you to Coca-Cola Bottling Company, United Incorporated, Amazon.com, JD Irving Limited, Elliot Machine Shop, YKK USA, Kumho Tire USA, and Dean Baldwin Pain for opening your doors to our educators. We are thankful to collaborate with MBCIA and Industries to provide students with the ability to build skill sets that match the real-world opportunities available to them. Ah, the Little Free Library. It is important for our students to have access to opportunities, and last week, Hartley Elementary School held a ribbon cutting for a new opportunity that will give back and support the community. Hartley Elementary's new Little Free Library allows students to borrow books to read at any time by simply walking up and choosing one from the shelves. Community partners are invited to donate their favorite books to the library, which is part of the school's selection for the Impact Library Award, the grant that funded this Little Free Library. Reach Scholars. This month, we surprised middle school students around the district by letting them know they are Reach Scholars. The Reach Scholarship Program was launched in two thousand twelve and is a needs-based mentorship and scholarship program designed to encourage students starting in middle school to persist in their educational pursuits. Students are provided with the academic, social, and financial support needed to graduate from high school, attend college, achieve post-secondary success, and be prepared for the 21st century workforce. Let us watch this video together to see who our newest Reach Scholars are in Bay County. Fantastic. And just know I was so happy because I think the Reach Scholarship amount is ten thousand dollars that you received in middle school in preparation for the remainder of your K-12 career. So let's give a hand. Vamgo, come here, students. Fantastic. Let's talk about the barn at Gruffland. The district officially opened the new barn for the agricultural departments at Gruffland High School and Gruffland Middle School this month. This barn was funded through the American Recovery Plan and will support an ongoing partnership with Newberry Dairy, as well as other livestock initiatives. We're just not here to cut a ribbon on a building. Gruffland High Principal Dr. Wendy Poole has shared with the crowd, "We're here to signify that an investment has been made for our students." The agricultural programs at Gruffland are a continuation of a sustained effort throughout the schools of the lower Bay County zone. The barn was designed and built by SP Design Group architects and engineers and ICB Construction Group, and we look forward to moving several cows to that ass barn. I cannot resist. How about our campus police? I would like to give a special thanks to the amazing administrative team there at Weaver Middle School. They showed up and showed out. Not only did they recognize their school resource officer, but they also recognized the entire campus police department this week by blessing them with a delicious appreciation lunch. We are truly grateful and thankful for the love and appreciation shown. We have a few things on the horizon. First of all, this week, we are celebrating the launch of our Show Up Initiative. What exactly is the Show Up Initiative, you may ask? Well, let's watch this video together by Southwest, put together by Southwest High School, the winner of the Show Up video competition.
I show up.
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 Here at Southwest, you know the importance of showing up. Not before the admittance, but before you receive the field of knowledge that you need to be prepared for our 21st world society. Here at Southwest High School, we practice a philosophy of innovation. It's who to be, I am because we are. By following this philosophy, it allows us to show up and be prepared to hit through our core values, which are student, community, collaboration, and great community. Hey, Clea, what do you do to carry yourself to life and grow value in school?
I'm an avid believer in having positive mindset, so to prepare for school, you have to, like I say, I'm gonna go to school, I'm gonna have a good day. I'm gonna learn, I'm gonna gain, I'm gonna learn something new. You have to think like that, because if you wake up thinking, oh, today is Monday, Sunday is a bad day, nobody likes Mondays, then that's how you're gonna feel throughout the whole day, opposed to being happy and optimistic throughout the whole day.
What do I do now?
I come to school with care, with the end goal in mind, knowing that I am destined for greatness.
And Sean, what is it like for you to show up at school every day and just stand?
This is what it looks like when you come to school here. I have my book bag, and I have my black suit.
What do I do, Chris?
I show up to personally participate, respect, intake, determination, and excellence to be successful at school.
By being prepared and showing up, you can experience all of the great things that are offered here at Southwest. Don't just take it from me.
I show up to support our excellent performance. No hatred.
And I show up to learn the technical side of production in general.
I show up for the constant support I get from the staff and students.
I show up to learn from my A's and L's features.
I show up to display my expertise.
I show up.
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 Fantastic. Thank you, Principal Young, at Southwest High School, and actually to all of our schools who submitted, uh, video submissions. We are really excited about taking this to the next level and getting everybody, students, parents, staff members, showing up every single day so that we can see how far we can go. Let's talk dual enrollment. WS Hutchings College and Career Academy at seventeen eighty Anthony Road will host an information night on dual enrollment, January twenty-sixth, from five to seven P.M. All night through eleventh grade, students and parents need to attend this event to learn how to prepare for student, your student, for college while they are still in high school. As one-year recess on thirteen WMAC, it's free ninety-nine, y'all. Don't miss out on this opportunity for students' success. Pre-K registration. I was thrilled to sit down this month with the latest faculty floor, our Director of Elementary Programs, to discuss all things Bay County pre-K for my podcast. Pre-K registration is coming up February the first through the seventeenth, so check out the latest in the loop with the soup to learn how you can register your child. Listen to the podcast on Apple and Spotify. And finally, teacher recruitment fair is right around the corner. Come be a part of our team. Join us for our recruitment fair on Saturday, March fourth, from nine to eleven A.M. at Gruffland High School, sixty-two fifty Skipper Road, I-Interstate seventy-five. We would love to see you there, talk to you about the opportunities available in our district, and have you join our team where we are hashtag Build for Bay. Y'all were supposed to say that with me. Let's do it again. Where we are hashtag Build for Bay. Thank you. And with that said, I'll turn the floor now to our Chief of Staff, Dr. Katika Rutter, for further recognition. Katika, ladies.
Good evening, President Dillard, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Stamm, and families and community members, and students, staff, et cetera. We are excited to go into this next phase where we do some awesome recognition. So starting us off this evening, we would like to introduce you to our newest district leader. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Condes Schuman, our Director of School Nutrition, to please come forward. Give her a roaring welcome as she's coming up. We are excited to see continued growth in our school nutrition with your new addition to our team. Again, welcome to Bay County School District. We are excited to have you. Service on the Board of Education requires a great deal of commitment and dedication on its own. Adding the responsibility of Board President speaks even more to the heart for students that all of our members have shown. Dr. Salma Dillard took on the mantle for the twenty-twenty-two calendar year as our Board President. Prior to her service on the Board of Education, Dr. Dillard was a longtime educator and a dedicated steward of what public service and community leadership should look like. Now in her third term as a Board Member, her role as President included leading the board through the superintendent selection, which brought us Dr. Stamm, of course, and the hiring process, as well as other important endeavors. We are appreciative of this dedication. Her second term as President, also after holding office in twenty-seventeen. Now, in honor of her role, we would like for Dr. Dillard to come forward, and we present for her a commemorative gravel at this time. Thank you. Dr. Dillard, thank you for your service through our district. We love you. One of our main goals as a district is to be a reliable organization. Now, this effort extends into everything that we do, from student services to our administration, and it no doubt includes our financial practices. At this time, I'd like to ask Chief Financial Officer Sharon Roberts and members of her team to please come forward. Let's give them a hand clap as they come. For the twenty-third consecutive year, the Bay County School District was recognized with the Governor Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. Thank you, Mr. Dillard, and also. This award honors our finance and accounting team for comprehensive and transparent annual reports. Congratulations, team, and thank you for representing the district so well. Alright, awesome. Thank you. Congratulations, team. Now finally, at this time, Mr. Kevin Grooms, our certified master athletic administrator and athletic director for the district, will join us for our athletics recognition.
Thank you, Doc.
Good evening. The actual work of our school athletic department requires more work than most people realize. The young coaching duties, athletic arrangers are tasked with safety first, eligibility, discipline, and preparing student athletes for post-secondary opportunities. At this time, I would like to, I would like to ask Southwest High School Athletic Arranger and football coach, Joseph Dupree, to come forward. This year, Coach Dupree was recognized as Region Two-O-A Athletic Director of the Year for his leadership with not only Southwest Patriots Athletic Program, but also for his contributions to our, to our county athletic director. He is truly, he truly exemplifies our creed, stewardship, scholarship, and sportsmanship. Congratulations and thank you for representing our district, Coach Joseph Dupree.
Thank you. And we're gonna continue our recognition at this time. I'll invite up Mr. Jamie Cassidy, and I'll ask if you can bear with us. We have lots of wonderful recognitions tonight. If he can bear with him, bear with us and move through them swiftly.
First of all, I'm gonna have to ask Coach Dupree if I can borrow a jacket somewhere. He might be the cleanest in the room. I may have to get taken off a little bit. I need to borrow a jacket. Won't you okay with that? So each year, our students participate in various competitions and exhibitions as part of the Career Technical and Agricultural Education Program. In honor of the upcoming celebrations of February's National CTAE Month, at this time, we'd like you to view this highlight video prepared by CTAE students and instructors, which features our FFA students.
Alright, good morning. My name is Elmo Pesada. I'm at Junior High Road in High School, and I'm a member of the Road in High School FFA. My journey started in seventh grade, when I didn't know what FFA was. It had just begun in the middle school. They were actually recruiting people for a team called the Nursery and Landscape Team, which is where I started. They pulled me over in class one day and said, hey, are you interested in this? And I'm like, sure, why not? Let's give it a shot. And so I did, and that's where my five-year journey had started. So last year, we tried a new competition called Floriculture, and that competition brought us to Nationals. And Nationals was a surreal experience. It was one of the best trips I've ever had in my life. Getting to talk to an individual in Nationals was crazy. Getting on that stage in front of thousands of people, that's an experience that it's hard to describe in words. It was like magical, but nervous at the same time. I was a bit scared, but it was an amazing experience. I want to do it again.
Good morning. My name is Logan Palmer. I'm a senior at Road in High School, and I started that in my seventh grade year of high school. That was about six years ago now, so I just had a friend tell me to join. I just quit chorus. I had nothing else to do. I wasn't doing anything after school. And I decided to join the Nursery and Landscape Team, and so I fell in love with it. You know, I mean, it was, it was really fun. It was challenging. It was a lot more challenging than just standing up and singing. You had to, you had to memorize stuff and actually study after school. It's something I loved. And so six years later, when everybody said to try Floriculture, it was something new. It was a new challenge, and I really enjoyed it. It just really clicked with our team, so to go to Nationals for it was just amazing. Nationals was crazy. Crazy. It was one of the best experiences I've ever seen. It was awesome. So thank you.
Uh, the day at the third, it was very fun, and you get to see a lot of new things with agriculture. It was just, I guess, experience a lot of new things. And you, I mean, you really just, like, when we're building our projects, you have to learn more about tools and building things and just how to measure and cut, just new experiences. Agriculture is definitely something that you should get into. Well, I think you should get into it. I, I'm glad that I got into it, because one of my, definitely one of my favorite things to be now is just, I mean...
The Jordan Association of Conserveation Districts hosts an annual poster contest to provide students the opportunity to have their artwork displayed as part of a national initiative. This year's theme was Healthy Soil, Healthy Life. At this time, we'd like to ask Vino Academy of the Arts third grader, Ajay Wright, to come forward with his art teacher, Sabine Morgan, and school representatives. Ajay was selected as the statewide winner in the second and third grade category. Ajay's work reflected the specific role that quality soil plays in the life of, for plants and humans. Congratulations, Ajay, and thank you for representing us so well.
Now.
National Beta provides opportunities for students to be enriched and recognized for their academic achievement. This effort requires adult leadership at every level, from the local school chapters all the way up to the national organization. At this time, we'd like to ask Burn Elementary School Academic Coach, Kristy Wilfer, to come forward. Ms. Wilfer was recently installed as the Georgia Junior Beta State Sponsor. This role will require her to help host the state convention over the next two years, as well as preside over meetings and other duties. Congratulations, Ms. Wilfer, and thank you for representing our district so well. Additionally, Beta students from district schools compete in a variety of disciplines against students from across the state as part of the state Beta Convention. This year, several students from Burn and Springdale participated in the state convention located in Savannah. These students placed high enough in these competitions to qualify for the national competition in Louisville, Kentucky this June. Students, when your name is called, please come forward with your school representatives to be recognized with photos by school. First, from Burn Elementary, the team of Ben Schultz, Naomi Pope, Alana Ware, and Passion Solomon won third place in musicology. The team of Ben Schultz, Messiah Brown, Ray Ceniar, and Passion Solomon won fourth place in Quiz Bowl. And Naomi Pope also won fourth place in the spelling bee. Congratulations to the team from Burn Elementary. Next, the team from Springdale. The team of Addie May, Lorelie Wall, and Tyler Hall won first place in Book Battle. Corbin Pimbergrass won first place in Performing Arts Vocalist. Simon Hall won second place in fifth grade Language Arts. Ashley O'Yon won second place in On-Site Art Painting. The team of Addie May, Lorelie Wall, Piper Reynolds, and Ethan Span won second place in Quiz Bowl. Ray Timmerman won third place in fourth grade Social Studies. And Tucker Gilbert won fifth place in fourth grade Social Studies. Congratulations to the team from Springdale Elementary.
Proper implementation of the Positive Behavioral Intervention and Supports Initiative has been a central part of what we do as a district. Each year, schools are recognized by PBIS for various levels of achievement, with distinguished schools being the highest honor. This year, eighteen Bibb County Schools were honored as PBIS Distinguished Schools, which reflects exemplary PBIS implementation as exemplified through data review, school visits, and more. Additionally, three of just seven high schools that received this honor statewide are located in Bibb County. At this time, I would like to invite PBIS Coordinator for Lander Smith to please come forward to have recognized these schools. Principals, please come forward with other school representatives when your school is called. Alexander Two Magnet School and Principal Fawcett Miller. Bruce Elementary School and Principal Kizzy Laun. Sunny Carter Elementary School and Principal Latricia Reeves. Central High School and Principal Dr. Chandra Dupree. Elean Alexander Academy at Burke and Elean Alexander Academy in Southwest with the Director Brooke Cole. Hartley Elementary School and Principal Dr. Carmelia Dillon. Negro Pond Elementary School and Principal Dr. Danielle Howard. John R. Lewis Elementary School and Principal Dr. Sonia Coley. Rosa Taylor Elementary School and Principal Ashonda Gilbert. Rutland High School and Principal Dr. Wendy Fuller. Skyview Elementary School and Principal Sarah Carlson-Cartez. Sore Academy and Principal Dr. Julia Daniel. Southwest High School and Principal Bernard Young. Union Elementary School and Principal Ashan Crawford. And Veterans Elementary School and Principal Dr. Erica Turnstall. Again, congratulations to all these schools. Let me flip the page. Minefield Academy of the Arts and Principal Kristy Graal. WS Hudson's College and Career Academy and Principal Dr. Jason Wees Weis. Congratulations and thank you for representing our district well.
Alright, thank you everyone. Madam President, if I may, prior to us going to a public comment, I've been made aware that the new head coach and teacher for Central High School, Jared Laws, is here. So we'd like to take this moment to bring him forward and recognize him. Mr. Laws, would you come forward? Thank you, Madam President. This is a good start. Recognitions.
This is a time now for invitation, this to address the board. And we do have one person to speak. Is it just one, Miss King? At this time, we're gonna ask Ms. Rhoda Batiste to come forward to this mic here. Is she here?
I'm here.
Okay, right here to this mic.
Good afternoon. Before we start the clock, we lost one of our school social workers. She lost her daughter this week. So I'm gonna ask that we give her a moment of silence in her time of loss and need at this time, if you will. Thank you. And we're just gonna continue to uplift her and help her in her time of loss. Because it can be very hard, you know, as a parent. Because, you know, most of us are parents, and we're not parents, then we have other family members. That, you know, this is just a horrible, horrific thing to have. Okay, now we can start the clock. I, Rhoda Batiste, and what I want to talk about is something I talked about twenty years ago. And I guess nobody heard me then, I guess they may not hear me now. But we have too many meetings. We meet every day, every hour, twice a day. I mean, we just have too many meetings. And this is one reason why we don't have time to give to our children sometimes. Because we're in a meeting. If you call a supervisor or a superintendent, they're in a meeting. They meet to meet. I said this twenty years ago, and I'm saying this again. We have got to stop some of the meetings. And I understand you do have to have meetings sometimes. But we need to cut down on the meetings. I had a principal to tell me one time. It was like midway in the year. And what he said to me, he said, "Miss Batiste, I've been in twenty-seven meetings so far, and it's just January." He said, "I don't have time to be a principal because I'm too far down calendar with the meetings. I have just meetings everywhere." And each of you know this, that meetings everywhere. With all the accolades that we receive, that we get, we've got to stop meeting so much. I mean, this is time that we take away from our precious children, that we could be giving to them. We have kindergarten, first, second, third graders. They can't read and they can't write because we're somewhere in a meeting. So we want to make sure that we cut down on those meetings. And I understand that you have to meet sometimes, but you have got to stop meeting so much. You can call any day of the week. If you call the superintendent's office, she's in a meeting. You call the deputy superintendent, she's in a meeting. I made five calls one day and everybody was in a meeting. So let's look at all these meetings that we are in. And we have just got to stop and look at where we need to focus our attention. And I'm gonna ask that superintendent run some type of survey. And let's see the top fifty kids who are in school that cannot read or write. You know, they're in kindergarten, and they still can't read and write. They're in first, second, and third grade, and we have problems in that area. So let's give our children time and attention that they need so we can teach them. And this is all of our responsibility, everybody's. So I ask the superintendent and his staff to let's cut down some of the meetings and move forward with educating our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Batiste. At this time, there are need for our executive meeting, Dr. King.
No, Madam President.
Thank you. Could I get a motion for, to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended to the FSS two and three, PR one, two, and three, and PS one and two.
Thank you. And you're removing the table height of higher students?
Yes, ma'am. Higher students table to non-classes.
Motion, second question.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion, I would be known by the word "I."
I.
I hope you say the consent agenda is now approved. The next item on the agenda is new business. Under new business, we have election of officers. So at this time, we all have election of officers. Eighty-five times related offices for calendar year 2023. The Board of Policy, the DA, entitled Board Officer Method of Election, provides that the board elect officers at the regular general meeting. President, Vice President, and Treasurer shall be elected to serve for a period of one year. Election procedures developed for each officer will be taken by a roll call vote of our Secretary, Dr. Sanders. If no candidate proceeds majority of the votes, there will be a runoff between the two candidates who receive the greatest number of votes. If there's a tie vote, the ballot thing is repeated until one candidate receives the majority. Not fifteen times like Congress. In the event that an officer is not elected in January, the existing officer should continue to serve until the successor is elected. So we'll begin the election process now. At this time, the chair will entertain nomination for president. Nomination for president. No second is required. So now, nominations for President of the Department of Education.
Madam President, I nominate Mr. Juwan Jackson as President.
Mr. Juwan Jackson.
Madam President, I nominate Dr. Lisa Garrett as President.
Hold one, hold one second. Mr. Juwan Jackson has been nominated as President. And the next nomination being?
Dr. Lisa Garrett.
Dr. Lisa Garrett. Are there any more nominations? No more nominations. We'll vote on the two nominations. The first person nominated was Mr. Juwan Jackson. Mr. Juwan, all those in favor of Mr. Juwan Jackson, Mr. Secretary, will you call the roll?
Yes, Madam President. Just a point of information, do we need to declare the nominations closed prior to engagement of those?
Certainly, sorry. Oversight. The nominations are closed on the say it to names. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Board members, I'll call you by name and record your vote and indicate the results at the end. Board Member Jackson?
Juwan Jackson.
Board Member Jackson?
Yes.
Board Member Haley?
Garrett.
Board Member Dilly?
Jackson.
Board Member Garrett?
Garrett.
Board Member Woodford?
Jackson.
Board Member Freeman?
Garrett.
Board Member Morton?
Dr. Garrett.
Madam Chair, the result of the vote is four votes for Board Member Juwan Jackson, four votes for Board Member Dr. Lisa Garrett. We have a time.
So with that time, with the time, we'll do another vote to see if we'll break the tie. So at this time, if you will call the roll again. Mr. Secretary?
Just a point of clarity, just want to clarify. Legal counsel here, do we need to afford an opportunity for anyone who would like to speak or make a statement at this time?
I publicly do not address the procedures for breaking the ties. So we're looking to Robert's schools a quarter. Robert's schools will provide that if a tie, there's a tie, voting is repeated until a candidate succeeds the majority. We will vote again, but before doing so, the chair may allow a discussion prior to the next vote.
And we will not be voting all night. We will not be voting 15 times. Once we get to a point, then the room stays. Everything come back when nobody needs. So at this time, we will postpone.
Okay, we'll call the roll call once again. Board Member Johnson?
Jackson.
Board Member Johnson?
Jackson.
Board Member Hamlin?
Garrett.
Board Member Dillon?
Jackson.
Board Member Garrett?
Garrett.
Board Member Woodford?
Jackson.
Board Member Freeman?
Garrett.
Board Member Morton?
Garrett.
Madam Chair, the results of the vote are four votes for Board Member Juwan Jackson, four votes for Board Member Lisa Garrett. We once again have a time.
Thank you, sir.
Madam President. And the rest of us.
Yes, sir.
I would be interested in hearing from Mr. Jackson and his colleagues on here as to why they have made president.
Back to the compliment, that combination.
Thank you.
We'll start with Mr. Jackson. If you would tell, Mr. Freeman would like to share why you should be president. And so would you, Mr. Jackson, why you would want to be president.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Freeman, for the opportunity.
Appreciate you, Joe.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Freeman, for the opportunity to be heard. This year will bring new challenges and opportunities requiring strong leadership. Our next board president will lead us through our high-level district's district strategic plan, which will determine our trajectory for the next five years. We must have a board president who can work alongside our superintendent, particularly in leading our governance team to ensure efficiency in our practices and effectiveness in our oversight and policymaking duties. As your board president, we will achieve these goals. We will seek to achieve, at middle, the 2023 distinguished exemplary board status from the GSBA. We assure strong recommendations are made through the time of dissemination of information for board consideration. We will be efficient in our meetings, particularly regarding effective time management, collaborative deliberation, and the fidelity of policymaking aligned to local policy and state and federal law. We will govern earnestly under a shared governor's approach, elevating each board member to equal public opportunities for stakeholder engagement. And we will work with our local delegation on matters of importance to our school system. In preparation for leadership, I seek the board presidency after completing the GSBA board chair training and through years of experience as a skilled parentarian. As chairman of the politics and rules committee for the past two years, I demonstrated the importance and effectiveness of guiding policymaking for our governing body. And if elected as your board president, I will be an effective leader representing the will of this board. In closing, I consider all my commitments a serious service responsibility. As board president, I will fulfill my commitment to lead our governance team as we seek our common mission to educate every child for a 21st century global society. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Garrett.
Thank you. I appreciate this opportunity to speak. I did not have any prepared message for you. But I would like to share that in my years of service to this county, I have served all children and all children well. I've also served as board of education because I want to continue to be a champion for all of our children and all means all. I am resident of this county. I'm a product of this county's schools. And I honor this possibility to serve children of our schools. I've been to all of the set trainings for the GSBA along with the board chair training. I've been to all additional trainings every year. I always make more trainings than are necessary for me to be at the minimum required level. I'm excited about what our superintendent is bringing us. And although I might have been a no vote, he knows that he has my support and he's had it since day one. So I hope that I can be seen as a viable candidate. I've been on this board for four years. I'm starting my second term unopposed. So obviously, the community thinks I'm doing what I need to do. So I just hope that you will put me in there next year.
Thank you, Dr. Garrett. At this time, we will move into our third vote. Roll call vote, Dr. Dillon.
Thank you, Madam President. Call each board member's name and record your vote and record the results. Board Member Johnson?
Jackson.
Board Member Jackson?
Jackson.
Board Member Hamlin?
Jackson.
Board Member Dillon?
Jackson.
Board Member Garrett?
Garrett.
Board Member Woodford?
Jackson.
Board Member Freeman?
Jackson.
Board Member Morton?
Garrett.
The results are six votes in favor of Board Member Juwan Jackson, two votes in favor of Board Member Lisa Garrett. Based on the results, Mr. Juwan Jackson has been elected president by a vote of six to two.
Thank you. Thank you to our superintendent and secretary. So, Mr. Jackson, congratulations. You are the president for 2023, for 2023. We will move on to the next offices. The next position is the position of vice president. There are nominations for vice president.
Madam President, I nominate Mary's Champion Johnson for vice president of the Big Kelly School Board of Education.
Miss Johnson has been nominated for their number nomination. Mr. Secretary?
Thank you, Madam President. I do want, I don't want to ignore the obvious, but is this called for an official vote?
This is an official vote. This is, this is a vote. She has been the only nominee. So she will now be serving as the vice president of the Board of Education.
Can we ask legal counsel whether a vote is required? Even though we may only have one nominee? Madam President?
If not, say that you will be a vote for each office and we'll be taking the roll call.
Thank you, Madam Counselor. With that said, I'll take, I'll record the votes at this time and I'll call each by, by name and record the results.
When I've been for, when I think we're ready, I think we need to close nominations.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. You sent my votes. We will now close the nominations for vice president.
I will now call names for the vote. Board Member Johnson?
Johnson.
Board Member Jackson?
Jackson.
Board Member Hamlin?
Johnson.
Board Member Dillon?
Johnson.
Board Member Garrett? Board Member Woodford?
Johnson.
Board Member Freeman?
Johnson.
Board Member Morton?
Uh, Johnson.
Madam President, Miss Mary's Champion Johnson has been voted unanimously for a position of vice president of the Board of Education.
Thank you so much. Miss Champion Johnson, you now will be served as vice president for the Board of Education. Congratulations.
Thank you, Madam President.
Next position is the position of the treasurer.
Madam President, I move to nominate Ms. Kristen Hamlin for treasurer.
Is there another nomination? Is there another nomination? Is there another nomination? The nomination is not closed. Ms. Hamlin has been nominated. And the secretary will call the roll.
Thank you, Madam President. I may now take the votes for a position of treasurer with Kristen Hamlin being the sole nominee. Board Member Johnson?
Hamlin.
Board Member Jackson?
Hamlin.
Board Member Hamlin?
Hamlin.
Board Member Dillon?
Hamlin.
Board Member Garrett? Board Member Woodford?
Hamlin.
Board Member Freeman?
Hamlin.
Board Member Morton?
Hamlin.
Based on a unanimous vote, Ms. Kristen Hamlin has been elected treasurer of the Board of Education for this year. Thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Hamlin. This closes out our nominations for the officers for 2023. Congratulations to Mr. Johnson, who served as a president of the Board of Education, Miss Champion Johnson, vice president, and our treasurer, Ms. Hamlin. Congratulations to the three of you, the support to working with each of you and helping, working with us and continuing to carry us forward into the next full year. Congratulations to each of you. Is there any old business? No old business, I declare this meeting over.